We have a quorum to begin the meeting.
Mr. Lenkowitz unmuted and joining us?
I'm here.
Okay, so Chair Lenkowitz is now in a position to call the meeting to order because we now have a quorum of five planning commissioners.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order for goodness 2021, our first meeting in January.
So in terms of our roll call, I'll just call roll and you answer if you're present at the meeting. We have Chair Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Baffa.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhardt appears to be absent and Commissioner Gilmore. And Commissioner Gilmore is absent. Margie, can you confirm that the packet's been posted and the required notice of today's meeting has been provided?
Yes, it has.
So that means we have jurisdiction to hear the cases that are brought forward on this agenda. So that'll bring us to item two.
All right, we have the approval of minutes for December 1st, 2020, regular meeting held via Zoom.
I make a motion, we approve the meetings, the minutes as printed.
Seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded.
We have a roll call vote on the minutes. Commissioner Hay.
Aye.
Commissioner Waters.
Aye.
Commissioner Baffa.
Commissioner Baffa, you're muted right now. Can you unmute, please?
Commissioner Baffa?
Yes.
Are you in favor of approving the minutes?
Yes.
And then Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
And Chair Lenkowitz?
Aye.
So that motion carries five to zero.
Okay, are we ready for new business?
We are ready to go to items 3.1A and B. So items 3.1A and B are quasi judicial land use matters and they are applications that were filed by South Ohio Land LLC. And the first application that's before you is an application filed by Mr. James Hall, who is present at the meeting. He's filed that on behalf of South Ohio Land LLC. And he is requesting approval of an amendment of the future land use map to change the future land use designation of property located on Cortland Circle, south of Schilling Road and west of South Ohio Street from its present designation as future employment to make it part of the neighborhood center at Schilling in Ohio. So these are separate applications. They may blend in a little bit with each other and some of the graphics may overlap as well. But as the planning commission is aware, the current Salina Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 2010 and that 2010 plan delineates certain areas as urban service areas and there are primary, secondary, and rural service areas. And as part of that, the future land use map is a part of that comprehensive plan. And the future land use plan is designed to show what future land use patterns there would be within the community. And so the comprehensive plan language states that where circumstances or land use and development goals have changed, amendments to the land use map may be appropriate to accommodate development that furthers the plan vision or other goals of the comprehensive plan. And so the property we're talking about is known as Liberty Edition Number Two. It's located at the southwest corner of Schilling Road and Ohio Street, and it presently contains a mix of PC5, PC6, and I-2 zoning. And it's shown as an employment center on the future land use map except for a single lot at the intersection of Schilling and Ohio, which is shown as being part of the Schilling, Ohio Neighborhood Center. So Mr. Hertz has the map up and the area that's identified in orange there is the area delineated as a future neighborhood center. And so as part of that, there are uses like industrial plants, warehousing, office parks that are considered employment uses because they imply provide employment opportunities. And they're also generally considered to be the most intense uses that we have in the city. So some examples of uses are manufacturing plants, warehouses, educational campuses, airport rail and support services, and then office uses. And so South Ohio Land owns the entire Liberty Edition, and they have filed this application that's a companion to this request to rezone nine lots on Cortland Circle that are currently Plan C6 to Plan C5. And these are part of the office employment area. And there are also existing lots in this subdivision that are zoned PC5 as well as PC5 at the various intersections at Schilling and Ohio. So from a zoning standpoint, going from PC6 to PC5 would be compatible with the zoning and future uses of nearby property. But the applicant in support of that has filed this application requesting to expand the neighborhood center to incorporate 14 lots in Liberty Edition Number Two. And of those 14, five are zoned PC5. And the others is proposing to rezone from PC6 to PC5. However, the C5 and Plan C5 zoning designations are not listed as potential zoning districts under the Neighborhood Center land use narrative. And so therefore, in addition to requesting a change to the future land use map, South Ohio Land is requesting that the land use category be amended to add C5 and Plan C5 as potential zoning districts. And so again, if you look at the zoning map, which Mr. Hertz has up, the all of the lots around that intersection are zoned Plan C5 except for a planned C2 lot that's farther north along South Ohio Street. So on page four of our report, we've sent out some factors that the planning commission and city commission should consider anytime there's a request to change the future land use plan. And in regard to that, in reviewing this application, staff feels like this amendment is justified by changing conditions in the community because in 2003, when Liberty Edition was originally created, it was Plan C6 and warehousing that was envisioned for the lots around Cortland Circle. The market and the surrounding neighborhood have changed in those 17 years. And the South Ohio Land believes that the Neighborhood Center, as addressed in the current comprehensive plan, will work better for this site. Property owner is interested in doing mixed use development on these lots, which fits better with the Neighborhood Center land use category than an employment center. And all four corners of the Schilling and Ohio intersection are part of a Neighborhood Center now. The time that has passed and the market have shown that there was no demand for the warehousing land use in this area. Rezoning to Plan C5 allows for better overall usage of the site and it's more in line with current market conditions. The PC6 zoning and the warehousing wouldn't fit within a Neighborhood Center concept. And the employment land use classification does not list any type of housing as an appropriate land use, but the Neighborhood Center does. So in addition to the changing conditions, the comprehensive plan encourages new development to take place in locations that are already served by utilities and services. And one of the things about the Liberty Edition, even though it's on the south side of Schilling Road, all needed services and utilities are in place to support development. We have paved streets, operational water and sewer lines, all other utilities are in place, plus a drainage system. And so the change to a Neighborhood Center would not negatively impact neighboring properties because the Plan C5 aligns better with the comprehensive plan and moving to a Neighborhood Center environment. And so your role in this case is to determine what your vision is for future development of the north half of Liberty Edition Number Two, south of Schilling Road. And so Dustin, if you want to show us, show what we, what we refer to as the north half is basically everything that's north of McIntosh Street there. So the area that's shaded in gray and the other lots along Schilling, that would be considered the north half. And the idea behind this area was that it was envisioned that there would be residential housing developed north of Schilling Road and that there would be industrial down towards Waterwell Road. And there needed to be some sort of land use buffer or transition use between the north side of Schilling Road and industrial farther south. So this north half of Liberty Edition was designed to serve as a buffer. So your choices as to the land use map would be to maintain the current map, the current boundaries between Neighborhood Center and Employment Center. You could recommend that the map be amended to show the subject properties as part of the Schilling, Ohio Neighborhood Center. Or you could recommend that the map be amended to show only the properties to the east of the north-south drainage easement as part of the Neighborhood Center, if you find a limited change is justified. So the staff report has a typo in it. It refers to the lots west of the north-south drainage easement, but it should say east of the north-south drainage easement. So if you could go back to one of those maps, Dustin, that shows the drainage channel. So that white strip that goes through the middle of the property is the, it's a north-south drainage easement that helps drain that area. So option three refers to changing the map only to include those properties east of the ditch in that area. So to continue along those lines, the other aspect of that is an explanation of what the Neighborhood Center means and much of the discussion that the commission has had over the years about the Neighborhood Center. And so because so much of the Neighborhood Center was, are already developed, five of the eight Neighborhood Centers are almost 90% developed. It appeared to be very challenging and unlikely that you could reform those areas into a Neighborhood Center concept. And then both staff and the planning commission were concerned that having separate and higher development standards for a Neighborhood Center might actually discourage development and push development towards commercial property and away from Neighborhood Centers. So we still have the Neighborhood Center, but the Neighborhood Center is primarily focused on encouraging a mix of uses such as neighborhood commercial and housing to locate closer to each other. So on the question of what zoning districts fit within a Neighborhood Center, we've had that discussion previously with the planning commission in 2017. And in 2017, the planning commission recommended that the list of potential zoning districts include C3, Plan C3, C5, and Plan C5. And the city commission generally concurred with that recommendation, but then deleted C5 and Plan C5 from the final version of their text amendment that was approved. So you could go back and reinstate your 2017 recommendation to add C5 and Plan C5, or you could recommend that Plan C5 only be added, but straight C5 should not be added. Or you could recommend that the status quo be maintained and that no changes be made to the list of potential zoning districts. So we'll go back to the map question first. And those, those options, what Dustin has on the screen represents the request that was made by the applicant, and that was to expand the boundary of the Neighborhood Center at this intersection to include those additional lots. So on page five of your report, we have the options as it relates to the map. And option one would be to leave the boundaries alone and reaffirm the existing map boundaries. Option two would be to adopt the map that Mr. Hertz has on the screen, which to incorporate all that area into the Neighborhood Center. And the third option would be to incorporate only the lots that are located east of the drainage ditch. And then to leave the ones to the west outside of that Neighborhood Center. So I would pause to see if there's questions about that. And we'll deal with the map question first, and then we can deal with the question of what zoning districts should be a part of a Neighborhood Center concept. So with that, if you opened any questions that you have of staff, then if you have questions of Mr. Hall, you can direct those to him, or we can wait and let Mr. Hall make his comments and presentation.
Dean, I've just got one question. That conservation area, is that that's shown on there, is that just a buffer is all that is?
Well, what that represents is, and it could have easily been applied to the other ditch as well. That's, that's what's referred to as the Schilling Road Ditch. It's a, the reason it's shown separately is because it's owned by the City of Salina. We own and maintain that ditch. And what it was is, it's a, it's a bypass channel. For those who've been around Salina for a long time, water used to come into the city from the south and it would flood the Bonny Ridge area, South High, all of that area. And in 1993, that ditch was constructed. And what it does is it catches all the water that migrates into the city from the south and diverts it east over to the Smoky Hill River Channel so it can't get up into the city. So the conservation area there is showing that that's owned by the city and it's, it's public land. The other conservation area is a, is a small pond there in the Bonny Ridge subdivision. But that linear area south of Schilling Road, that is owned by the city and that's the Schilling Road Ditch.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about the map portion of the application?
Dean, what kind of businesses would go in there?
Well, the, the businesses that would be allowed there would be dependent on, on the zoning that's ultimately approved. Right now, the property is zoned Plan C6, which would allow almost any kind of business. And the original intent for making that C6 instead of C5 is that there was a desire in 2003 to try to make those lots available for businesses that wanted to have a warehouse or warehousing. And as you can see, if you've driven out there, there hasn't been any interest in developing those types of uses there. And so since the only motivation for doing C6 in the first place was to attract warehousing and there's no longer an interest in that, I would think that when you're talking about mixed uses, you're going to be talking about uses that support surrounding neighborhoods, whether that's a small restaurant, whether that's nail salons and beauty shops, dry cleaners, things of that nature is, is what you would be looking at in terms of a Neighborhood Center concept.
So that would be mixed retail and, and commercial storage and stuff?
Well, the other, the other thing that a Neighborhood Center and C5 zoning does is it opens up the area also for different forms of residential housing. So you could have a situation where with the Neighborhood Center concept, where you have some areas set aside for forms of housing and then also have neighborhood retail or services to support that. So that, that's one of the main concepts in the residential, is the residential component of the Neighborhood Center, which is different than a straight commercial or a straight employment center. So that, that's the concept. So that, that's the concept behind neighborhood centers is to try to encourage a mix of both commercial and surrounding residential units. So just for the benefit of the commission, on page six of the report, we, and the comprehensive plan says a neighborhood center is a smaller mixed-use node that consists of locally focused services that can include a residential component. Convenience goods such as smaller specialty grocery stores, personal services like dry cleaning, beauty salon, banks, restaurants, gas stations, and small offices are the primary commodities and services that are provided within neighborhood centers. So the idea is to have smaller scale businesses as opposed to a, a strip center or larger commercial centers. And then to be able to intermix that with residential housing if, if the, if there's a market and interest for that.
Work into that area?
Think you might have got cut off the first part of that. Is that a question?
Yeah, so would an apartment complex fall within the, that part of the resident or?
If, if that area was designated for a neighborhood center that would support a mix of various multifamily housing, whether it's duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, an apartment complex, elderly housing, any of those types of things would fit within a neighborhood center concept, but would not be, would not be foreseen if it, if it was an employment hub or employment center. So that, that's the primary distinction between the current employment designation and a possible neighborhood center designation.
Okay, thank you.
I think the other thing that I may failed to mention, and we may bring up in the zoning, but the part of what makes the Liberty Edition number two somewhat unique is that it was the first development out in this neighborhood. So in terms of annexation and, and zoning and plating and all that, the Liberty Edition came first in 2003, followed up by Quail Meadows on the north side of Schilling Road, which occurred after. And then you had Stone Lake on the northeast corner. And then finally, the Ryan Edition on the southeast corner, which is currently undeveloped. But in terms of what happened first, it was the Liberty Edition. And so it was unknown at that time exactly what was going to happen around that intersection. And as it turned out, the, the Plan C6 and the trying to accommodate warehousing was not, was not the right mix for, for this property. And now the South Ohio Land has a different vision for the property. So if there's, if there's no further questions from, for the staff, we might want to hear from Mr. Hall, just so he can explain to you the, the vision that South Ohio Land now has for this property and why the, the request to expand the neighborhood center.
Thank you, Dean. Appreciate everyone coming together on Zoom today to do this. I, this is the first time I've been involved in one of these types of meetings, Zoom. I'm, we're used to being in a room where I can stand up and come to the microphone and talk to y'all. If, if you can't hear me, please let me know. I'll, I'll speak louder or adjust. Dean, Dean, Dean was very right. We were the, we were the first people to that, to that corner. And we did this in 2003. And frankly, everybody, we, we did the, we did the best we could to envision what we thought was going to work. And we were wrong. We, the times have changed. The areas around our, our site have developed differently than, than we anticipated and thought they would. And thus, we don't see an, a want or a, a reason to continue to want to put C6 type businesses into this location. Our initial thought was that this would be a, a great place for warehousing. And we were, we were just wrong. So as we've looked at this over the last year and a half and talked about the ways to do this differently, we've done a lot of soul searching and, and discussing and, and the expanding the neighborhood center that is already in the upper northeast quadrant of this to include basically all the, the lots that we're talking about seem to fit with the way the community is going and what's going on in this, in this neighborhood. When we, when we initially did this, one of the things we did was we said we want to be shovel-ready. We put in the streets. We put in the city utilities. We've got a lot of Kansas gas, gas lines running there. We've got storm sewers. We constructed as part of this the north-south ditch that runs down through the middle of the property. So that it also, when you, when you build on one of these lots, the advantage of this large ditch down through the middle is you drain directly into that and you, you're not building detention ponds on your lots. There are some one-time fees that you pay to do that, but those are minimal fees compared to what the long-term costs are for detention ponds on the property. You, you can see the two buildings that we have done out at the site, the Kennedy and Co. facility, which is part of actually what's called Liberty Edition One. And we worked with the city of Salina to get that initial piece of property in, done, platted so that we could get the initial building of that building done and, and up. And Kennedy and Co. moved in there. And while we were building that building, we worked with the city to zone and plat the rest of this. The second building out there is the Sunflower Bank Headquarters Building. Both of those buildings, well, anything that goes on in this property has to go through our Architectural Control Committee. So it's very well regulated, not only by what the city's owning and rules are, but, but what our own internal rules and requirements are. We've, we've had the opportunity to put some other, we've had some requests to put some other businesses out there. But what they, what their vision of it to go in there and what our vision was didn't mesh, so we chose to pass. We have seen, like I said, in the last year and a half, as, as all of this area is changing and moving out there, that what we initially did in 2003 is wrong. So we're coming today to say we would like to amend where we are and expand the neighborhood center and change this zoning. Basically, we're downzoning from a PC6 part of this to a PC5. But that's our request, and we hope everyone can go along with us.
We appreciate your feedback. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
If not, then again, this, this is a two-part question. And the first part deals with the map. And then once that is decided, then the second part deals with what, what zoning classifications should go with a neighborhood center concept. And so your, your first item for consideration is, is called out on page five of your staff reports. And as it relates to the map, the planning commission has, has its first alternative to maintain, to reaffirm the existing map and maintain the existing boundaries between employment and neighborhood center. And Mr. Hall asked me previously and again today, and, and the commissioners could well ask, why, why was just a single lot at the southwest corner designated as a neighborhood center originally in 2010? And the, the thought was that that was probably the, the only lot or the main lot that would be developed with intersection-oriented uses such as a convenience store or something along those lines. But the line that was drawn in 2010 was not very scientific. It was, it was based on predicting future land use patterns. And so it, it wasn't arbitrary, but it, it, you know, it could have easily been a larger area. But at the time, only the, the single lot at the southwest corner was shown as part of that neighborhood center. So your, your first option would be to leave that just as it is. The second option would be to amend the map to show all of the subject properties identified as part of an expanded neighborhood center at that intersection. And then the third option would be to only change the designation for those lots that are east of that north-south drainage easement or drainage ditch. And so as, as, so I don't, I don't have my handy pointer, so I'm going to rely on, on Dustin. But basically, you would, you would designate the lots that are at the quadrant just to the east of the ditch. And the other ones would remain as is. The companion zoning application does include lots west of the ditch. And so that's why this, this is the request area for the land use map change. So with that, those three options on the table, I'll turn it back to the chair, and you can entertain motions or discussion about those three options.
Do we have any discussion items or feedback we need to hear on this?
I just wanted to make sure. So the staff's recommendation is option two, right?
That, that is our recommendation because it, it goes along with the applicant's rezoning application.
Okay.
But you're, you're, it's within your discretion to do a reduced area if you see the lots east of the ditch differently than west of the ditch. But our, our recommendation is the whole thing because that, that ties in with the applicant's rezoning request.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense because otherwise, if you have it as a neighborhood center, then right next to it, you have just a small area that's not going to be compatible with the others. I mean, back into a warehouse is those types of things. So I think that redoing the whole thing would be the best, best thing. Now, so do we do this for a motion? Is this going to be strictly for the application M20-6 right now then?
Yes, we are focused only on M20-6, and it has two components. The first component is the map itself. And then the second component would be the, the zoning districts that are within the neighborhood center. So the first, the first motion is to define what the boundaries are of the neighborhood center.
Okay. So then I guess I would make a, a motion to approve application M20-6 to reclassify from future employment to future neighborhood center, which would be the recommendation number two from the staff.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. I just wanted to double check, make sure there's not any members of the public here that have any feedback regarding this, this item.
I was going to interject it just to let everybody know that we don't have anybody additional logged into the meeting currently. The only individual that's not a commissioner or an applicant on this particular item is the next applicant, Mr. Crane. I don't know if he has any thoughts on it or not, but he would be the only other individual that we would probably want to seek information from.
I'm good. I, I support it, so. Good luck, Jamie.
We have a, who gave the second on that motion?
I seconded it.
Joe Hay.
Yeah.
Joe Hay, okay. So we have a, a motion to recommend that the future land use map be amended to show the shaded properties there as part of an expanded neighborhood center. And I will call roll on that motion. So we have Commissioner Baffa.
Aye.
Commissioner Waters.
Aye.
Commissioner Hay.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Chair Linkowitz.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes by a five to zero vote. And then the next part of this, the second part is back, back in 2017, we had a similar request, and we were discussing the list of, of potential use zoning categories within a neighborhood center. And one of the things that staff had tried to emphasize to the commissioners at that time was looking at Crawford in Ohio and then looking at this neighborhood. Dustin, if you could put the, the zoning map up again just briefly? So what you see at this intersection is Plan C5, Plan C5, Plan C5, Plan C5. But the Plan C5 is not listed as a potential zoning district in the neighborhood center land use narrative. And so we, we attempted to address that in 2017. And the final version of that amendment did not include that. But your options as relates to the districts, I also observed that, that C3 did not get included in 2017 either. But your first option would be to recommend that the C3, C5, and Plan C5 be added to the list of potential zoning districts in the neighborhood center. You could recommend that just the Plan C5 be added to the list, but, but none of the other districts. Or you could recommend that the status quo be maintained and that no changes be made to the list of potential zoning districts in the neighborhood center. And staff's, staff's view was that the, the exclusions of those listed districts was just an oversight by the consultants who helped prepare the plan in 2010 and didn't recognize some of the existing zoning patterns that we had in place. And so from staff's view, a large percentage of the total land use area that makes up neighborhood centers is Zone C5 and PC5. And including those districts as potential districts would assist staff in administering and interpreting and applying the land use plan in these areas. So the decision as to what to recommend is yours. So you, you could insert C3, C5, and Plan C5 into the list. You could look at this area and focus on the Plan C5 and, and add it as the only additional district. Or you could recommend that there be no changes made to the list of potential zoning districts. So I'll turn it back over to the chair to entertain a motion or discussion.
Any discussion or feedback? Any discussion or feedback on that?
So right now it is zone P five and P, uh, P C five and P C six?
Yeah, so just so you understand the chronology, um, this property was annexed, zoned and platted in 2003, which predated, um, the current comprehensive plan. So the zoning was already in place in, on many of these properties at the time that the, uh, future land use map and the comprehensive plan was adopted. And so what we have found as a staff is that the neighborhood center was overlaid on top of properties, many of which already had C five and C three zoning. So, um, this to me is an effort to make our comprehensive plan and our existing zoning map align better. The, um, the consultants who assisted with the comprehensive plan were fairly confident that they were going to, um, next get a contract to rework our entire zoning ordinance. And so it was, in their minds, not important to tie the comprehensive plaque back or plan back to the existing zoning categories. And that has proven not to be the case because we still have our existing long time zoning ordinance. And so from staff's perspective, this is just an effort to try to make the, the zoning map and the comprehensive plan, um, line up better.
I don't really see a need to change anything, uh, unless I missed something.
Well, here's the, we have a companion item, which is the next item, which is to rezone property, um, to Plan C five. And the commission has already recommended that the neighborhood center be expanded. So if, if you're trying to make a finding or reason that rezoning properties to Plan C five is consistent with the comprehensive plan, then if you have a land use category like neighborhood center that doesn't list or identify Plan C five as a, as a district that's a potentially eligible district, then you can't really conclude that zoning property Plan C five is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So the, the reason for the change is so that you have a better alignment between the land use category neighborhood center and the potential zoning districts that would occur inside the neighborhood center. So that, that's the reason.
So we need to have the neighborhood center allow the C five and the P C five or just the P C five?
Well, to make, to make it make sense in, in the context of the next item.
Right. Okay. So do we need to make a motion then on that before we get to the application Z two zero point five, dash five?
So on M twenty dash six is a two-part recommendation. The first recommendation you've made as it relates to the, the land use boundary. The second part is, as you could, you could recommend as, um, Mr. Baffa has indicated, he doesn't, didn't see a need to make any changes to the list of zoning districts. That is an option. You could recommend that only Plan C five be added or P C five be added as an additional potential district. Or you could recommend that both C five and Plan C five, um, be added as potential zoning districts.
Okay. So the difference between the C five and the P C five?
The primary difference between the C five and the Plan C five is under Plan C five, any site plan for a specific use, be it office, commercial, multifamily residential, um, whatever it might be, that site plan has to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission before a, uh, building permit can be issued. And C five district, a building permit could be issued, um, just under the auspices of the, of the C five. So the, uh, I guess the way that, the reason that we've distinguished between C five and Plan C five is that the, the C, the Plan C five give is areas that the planning commission has more control over in terms of what, what occurs there. And so the, the Plan C five is slightly more restrictive than the C five. So if you just didn't want, feel comfortable opening it up to all straight C five zone property, then you could, um, amend it to list Plan C five, um, as a potential zoning district. Then 2017, it turned out that the only, the only district that got added was Plan C three. And so that, that, that is what occurred, um, there at the Crawford and Ohio intersection. But, um, the reason we've broken it out is that you may only feel comfortable adding Plan C five, and so we provided that as a separate option.
Gotcha. Well, I think that would be the direction that I would be leaning in.
I would agree with that.
I agree too.
The, the entire area to be P C five?
Yeah, I think that for the neighborhood centers, that we should allow, uh, we should add in the P C five instead of strictly the C five, just because of the neighborhood center and what it's going to be coming close to residential in those areas. So I think that it gives you a little bit more control to make sure that it's going to blend in well with those areas. So I would be in.
Okay.
For your benefit, Mr. Baffa, I'll give you two examples. Um, we have the intersection of homes and Crawford, which is currently undeveloped. And we have the corner of Markley and Magnolia currently undeveloped. If, if you make the change to add Plan C five as a potential zoning district, then if, if someone came forward, um, with an application to rezone one of the corners of Markley and Magnolia, what you're saying is that you would be receptive to an application at that intersection, but only if it was Plan C five as opposed to C five. If that, if that helps explain.
I believe that's, yeah.
So it's, what we're doing here is kind of forward looking to say if I've got vacant property in a neighborhood center or vacant intersections like those, that you would be open to considering Plan C five as part of a neighborhood center. And what alternative two says is that you're only, um, you're only willing or interested in adding Plan C five at, to that, uh, list.
So then are we ready? Can I make, are we ready for a motion or?
I think so.
Okay. I would make a motion then that we add the, um, P C five to the neighborhood center designation?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded.
So the motion on the floor is a recommendation that Plan C five or P C five be added to the list of potential zoning districts in neighborhood center.
Yes.
I'll take, roll on that motion. Uh, Mr. Baffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes five to zero. And that would move us on to item three point one B. And that is an application, companion application that's been filed also by South Ohio Land. And as, as described, um, we've given you all the background, um, of what occurred in, in 2003. Um, as Mr. Hall indicated, there was, there's a lot of thought that went into, um, what was occurring in this area, but at the same time, um, a little bit of guesswork. And so when working with South Ohio Land, staff pointed out that, um, C six was the first zoning district that allowed warehousing type uses. And so at the time, South Ohio Land had that vision for those properties, um, with the land abutting Schilling Road being Plan C five, um, and then stepping up to a C six behind that. And, um, as we've all learned, and the P C five was designed to provide a physical and visual buffer between the housing north of Schilling Road and more intense uses to the south. And none of those intense uses that were envisioned at the time, um, have occurred. And so because of the lack of market for warehouse type uses, South Ohio Land is now envisions these lots as being developed with a mix of residential housing and light neighborhood scale commercial uses and more of a neighborhood center type development pattern. So if you think of it this way, warehousing is allowed in C six, but housing is not. And housing is allowed in C five, but warehousing is not. And so, um, South Ohio Land is requesting that these nine lots be redesignated from P C six to P C five. Um, and if that request is approved, then all sixteen commercial lots in Liberty Edition number two would be zone P C five. So in terms of intensity, um, you could view this as actually a down zoning from P C six to P C five. And so your role in, in this application is determine whether P C five would be a more appropriate designation for these lots than the current P C six zoning. So under C five zoning, you have all the uses permitted in C five plus any conditional uses that might be approved by the planning commission. So this would include business and professional offices, retail stores, um, new and used vehicle sales, restaurants, those would be permitted uses. And, um, conditional uses would include different forms of housing like multifamily housing and assisted living. And then we, we've outlined for you the development standards, which are, are not much different. But we've, we listed for you on page six, um, there are certain uses like agricultural implement sales, amusement parks, animal hospitals, automotive repair, equipment sales and rental, lumberyards, mini warehouses, manufactured home, sales lots. Those are things that are permitted in C six, but not in C five. And then you have, um, properties like outdoor theaters and warehouses that are allowed in C six, but not C five. So the original request was for C six. The C six was approved because it was kind of a buffer or transition between the, the P C five along Schilling and the I two farther south. But P C five would serve that same purpose and would probably be more compatible with the remainder of the lots, not only in Long Schilling Road, but also at the Schilling, Ohio intersection. Um, so all four quadrants, the lots right on those corners are zone Plan C five. And so, um, staff believes that a change in zoning from P C six to P C five would make these lots more compatible with the zoning of nearby property. Um, and so the applicant also believes that some of the uses that he's seen that would be allowed in C six would, in, in South Ohio Land's view is not compatible, um, with what they're trying to attract as a character for Liberty Edition number two. Um, we attached a map that depicted the location of utilities in this area, but we do think it's important, um, that all water, sanitary sewer, gas, electrical lines are in place. Um, all the lots are in fact shovel ready. And we did provide an attachment also that, um, listed a number of impact fees collected in Liberty Edition number two. And, uh, one of the things that the planning commission has indicated is important over time is that growth and development pay, pay for itself. And so one of the things that was done with the impact fees out here is that any development that occurs will help pay, uh, for the cost of rebuilding Schilling Road, the cost of the, uh, drainage ditch as well as, um, paying for a water line that was installed in Schilling Road. And so, um, any development that does occur in this area will, will have those impact fees collected, which will help for the growth and development to pay for itself. Um, Cortland Circle is complete. It's a loop street that connects with Schilling Road. Dustin, you might want to show on there where Brayburn is on paper, but not built. It's the only street out there that's not built, but Brayburn is an east-west street that, um, runs from Cortland Circle over to Ohio and the potential access point. And if you're familiar with the area, you know that you can't get from Schilling Road across the ditch to those lots to the south. So one of the reasons for Brayburn Street was to provide better access to those lots, um, that are in the northeast corner there. The other thing I would point out is that there's platted restricted access on Ohio Street. So there's no individual driveways or access points on Ohio. Um, so all the access would be from Brayburn or Cortland Circle. Um, as far as the conformance with the comprehensive plan, um, you have just addressed that by amending the map and also recommending that Plan C five be a, uh, identified, uh, zoning district in the neighborhood center area. And so, um, we've provided some possible findings on page nine of your report, which we, uh, think support the applicant's request to go from C six to P C five. And so your options on this zoning application would be to recommend approval of the applicant's request for, um, down zoning these nine lots, um, to P C five. You could recommend approval of, of down zoning to Plan C three instead if you find that there's some potentially incompatible uses. Um, we didn't encourage this option because there's no Plan C three in the vicinity and you would be creating an isolated district that's unrelated to any surrounding district. Um, you could recommend that consideration of this application be postponed to allow the applicant or staff to provide you with additional information. Or you could recommend denial of the zoning change from P C six to P C five. Um, if you determine that the, there are appropriate findings to support the requested zoning map change, um, staff would recommend option one, which would be to go from P C six to P C five. Um, the other thing we wanted to note is that the applicant is requesting that's middle of final site development plans for each lot be deferred until a use is identified and a building permit is ready to be applied for. So, um, in the So um in the case of the Sunflower Bank Building there, that property was zoned Plan C five and the site plan and all the development plans for that site went before the planning commission for review and approval before a building permit was issued. And since they're not identified uses at this time, what that means is if you recommend PC five zoning, then the site plans for those individual building sites will come back before the planning commission for review before any building permits are issued. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that commissioners might have. I do want to report that Mr. Stan Byquist, who owns property to the north and to the east of this property, um, said he was not going to be able to participate in the Zoom meeting, but he, he wanted the commission to know that um he is supportive of the application and he hopes that the planning commission will approve uh South Ohio Land's request. With that, I'd be open to any questions or you have about um the application or any of the maps or attachments.
I don't see any problem with uh going PC five.
Greg, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we request a zoning map change from PC to PC five, the recommendation on option one.
I'll second that motion.
We would want to make sure that there's anybody from the public uh that they have a chance to speak. I don't think we have anybody. Uh, again, Mr. Crane is the only non-applicant, non-commissioner, non-staff person in the meeting, but uh maybe there's somebody listening that, that wants to log in real quick to the meeting to, to say something and we want to give them a chance to speak.
As I indicated, um, we did send notice out and post signs on this property. I had a phone call from Stan Byquist, a neighboring property owner who is not with us at this meeting, and I also had a conversation with Scott Birkcamp of Birkcamp Inc., and he just had some questions, but he didn't have any concerns about the application that's before
I think given that uh we don't have anybody new logging in that might have been watching on TV or something on access or Slina Media Connection, then I think we're, we're probably free to have a deliberation by the uh commission.
Thank you.
So um we do, we do have a motion made by Commissioner Hayes and seconded by Commissioner Linkiewicz to recommend that the nine lots be rezoned from Plan C six to Plan C five. And so I'll take a, a roll call on that um on the motion. Commissioner Bappa?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Waters?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Linkiewicz?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries by a five to zero vote and these uh recommendations on these items will go forward to the city commission on January twenty-fifth. And before we leave this item, we just see if Mr. Hall had any questions or comments about that.
Uh, no questions. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming together this afternoon and deliberating this and seeing what, seeing what our change in our vision is and, and um appreciate your vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Um, the next item on the public hearing portion of your agenda is an application to, for a conditional use permit and was filed by Sunset, Slina Sunset LLC. And the request is for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a climate-controlled mini warehouse facility in a C three shopping center district. And the proposed location is the west wing of the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center. And so Dustin, you have confirmed that Mr. Crane is still with us?
I'm here.
Okay, so the uh Sunset Plaza is part of the Sunset Manor addition, and that addition includes property that's east and west of Broadway Boulevard between Crawford Street and Republic Avenue. And the plat of that subdivision was approved back in nineteen fifty-two by the planning commission. And what is now the Sunset Plaza site was zoned D for local business in nineteen fifty-four. There was a replat that was done in nineteen fifty-six, and that created the current zoning lot for the shopping center. Our uh records indicate that the main east-west shopping center building uh was constructed in nineteen fifty-nine, with a number of um additions made in the early nineteen sixties. The north-south building was constructed in nineteen sixty-one. Um, our records indicate that the far western portion of the shopping center was converted into movie theaters in nineteen seventy-one. Mr. Crane may have better information, but our research indicated that the theaters closed in about two thousand and two, and that space has primarily remained vacant since that time. Uh, Slina Sunset LLC um of McPherson, Kansas purchased the shopping center in two thousand seventeen. As planning commissioners may have observed, um, there have been some major updates and renovations made, particularly to the Dylan's uh grocery store and the shopping center parking lot. And then in June of two thousand and twenty, a building permit was issued for a new Dylan's fueling center and the parking lot along Crawford Street, and that facility opened in October uh and has been in operation since that time. Um, what we've observed is that the shopping center owners, including the current owner, have struggled to fill that far western wing of the shopping center. And Slina Sunset LLC is now proposing to convert that space um into a climate-controlled mini storage facility. Um, there was a conceptual floor plan that was submitted. Um, and so the space would occupy about a hundred and twenty-five foot wide by a hundred and thirty-foot deep space at the west end of the main shopping center, and it would provide about fifteen thousand, a hundred and thirty-five square feet of indoor storage area. Um, applicant plans to renovate and reuse the open floor space by constructing ninety-two individual climate-controlled personal storage units, and those would be accessed by five-foot interior hallways. Um, they would be designed to provide connectivity throughout. Uh, the storage units are designed to provide various sizes, ranging from five-by-ten units up to ten-by-twenty-foot units. And the individuals will be allowed to store possessions in enclosed climate-controlled environment for a monthly fee. Um, we had preliminary plans that we submitted to you in your packet. Um, it appears that the plan went to create a glass corridor at the front of the building. It appears that there would be office and restrooms in the front of the building, and that all ninety-two storage units would have interior access within the buildings. All units would have overhead doors for maximum accessibility. Um, the entrance on the north into the glass corridor is not clearly marked on the plans. It appears that customers will access the facility from the north side of the building facing the parking lot. Um, there's also a loading area showed at the rear. Um, we are not clear, and we need to hear from the applicant whether Sunset, Slina Sunset plans to own and operate this, or they're going to lease or sell it out to another party to operate. But the purpose of bringing this to you today is that mini warehouse facilities are a conditional use in the shopping center district. And so um your job is to evaluate the proposed use of the property and to determine whether enclosed mini warehouse facility at this location would be compatible with the shopping center and the development in the surrounding area. So this hearing today allows commissioners to receive public input about and establish appropriate conditions for approval of the proposed use. Um, one of the findings that you need to make is that the proposed use will comply with all applicable zoning ordinance regulations. Sunset Plaza itself complies with all C three district requirements except for some non-conforming setbacks in the fact that the uh shopping center was developed before the city had any landscape regulations. So there are some aspects that are non-conforming, but they are grandfathered in. And there is uh more than adequate existing parking to support this use. We would ask the applicant to clarify whether there's going to be a onsite offices as part of this operation. Um, with the assistance of the current owner and their architects, we did a parking inventory of Sunset Plaza, and we, we determined that there are thirty, three hundred and thirty-eight strike stalls, which exceeds the minimum requirements for the shopping center. And mini warehouses would have a lower parking demand than retail space or a movie theater. Um, so there's not an increase in parking requirements. The applicant believes that this would bring new activity to vacant space by creating safe and clean climate-controlled storage, and he believes that's a service needed by citizens of the Slina. Um, this could be viewed as an upgrade of what is currently vacant space, and it would put a vacant space into productive use. Um, your role is to think about this use and how it might impact the rest of the shopping center and the adjacent Broadway corridor. Um, the applicant points out there's no major exterior changes being made, and the change in use will not be noticeable from the outside. Um, while the footprint and the nature of the um exterior character will not change, there will be a different activity, and that activity could change the perception of Sunset Plaza as a retail center. Um, but if you are familiar with the area, there is a mini storage facility directly to the east of Sunset Plaza at ten twenty-five West Crawford. There shouldn't be any impact on public utilities or parking. Um, access is already established. Um, you know, Broadway Crawford intersection is part of a community center, which is like a larger view, vision of a neighborhood center. And so we've provided some information from the comprehensive plan. But the comprehensive plan basically encourages this intersection to be a mixed-use node that will provide commercial, retail, and service uses to support the surrounding neighborhoods and the daily needs of residents, as well as the urban redevelopment along Broadway north of this center. Um, so this comprehensive plan shows this property is being appropriate for commercial retail use. A storage facility is commercial in nature, but would not be considered a prime retail use. So while this would not conflict with the comprehensive plan, it would be a step away from Sunset Plaza's identity as a destination for shopping and dining. Um, your options this afternoon would be to approve the conditional use permit application as submitted. You can approve it subject to specified conditions or revisions to the plan. You can postpone consideration of the application if you feel additional information is needed to reach a decision, or you could deny the application if you don't think findings can be made to support it. If based on the information provided by the applicant, the commission finds that conversion of this space to a climate-controlled mini storage would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area and would be appropriate use, um, we would recommend approval of the application be made subject to the following conditions and any additional conditions that you think are appropriate. Um, use of the property should be limited to indoor climate-controlled storage only, no additions or modifications of the existing building footprint, or any building demolition should occur without approval of a site plan amendment by the planning commission. The applicant shall restripe or stripe at least ten designated spaces in the existing parking lot to serve customers and employees of the mini warehouse facility. So in our review, the, the two things that we were not able to clearly confirm was whether there would be a designated office space inside this facility, and we couldn't clearly tell where the customer entrance was on, and if it would in fact be on the north side of the facade. So um staff would be open to any questions you have about a report or the attachments, and then we would want to get clarification of those things from Mr. Crane.
Is uh, uh, how is it sound right now?
The entire shopping center is zoned C three shopping center district.
I would feel much better by, with approving the application, uh, should the front of the building be remodeled. It's kind of unattractive right now.
Well, we don't, we don't have an elevation for you, but we might want to, you might want to direct that question to Mr. Crane as to if there's any plans for renovating or changing the exterior appearance of that.
Was that whole front end, wasn't it already remodeled with the rest of the, when Dylan's was remodeled?
Uh, correct, and I don't know if this is my, my, the correct time, but thank you for having me. We, we did a full remodel of uh over one and a half million dollars on the exterior as of uh, it, it ended in twenty nineteen, uh, you know, November of twenty nineteen, so it's been about a year. Um, we, we remodeled the whole thing through the architects and uh construction firm law uh contractors who also did the fuel center and the uh parking survey as well. So it was all the same group um that did that.
Just some feedback um to the applicant. I was in that parking lot a couple of weeks ago, and honestly, it's not a part of town I normally end up in, just uh day-to-day business, but the one thing I wanted to mention to you, um, for what it's worth, I've been in this community on and off the last forty some odd years, and I've never seen that place look better. It just looked a, a lot more dialed in and clean and well-kept, and I appreciated it.
So I'm going on two-year-old information?
I'm, I'm sorry, I think we walked on each other there.
Yeah, I, I, I must be going on two-year-old information then. Uh, I haven't been by there. Appreciate me.
I recommend you do, because I think you'll be pleasantly surprised and um
Okay.
Just um, just my personal two cents on this. Um, you know, you have a movie theater that has a cash flow from a commercial property standpoint, looks like he has a solution in mind, and my personal opinion is that I'm all for it and get that, get that empty space filled and uh get it profitable.
Mm-hmm. I agree a hundred percent because like I said, that, you know, the parking lot looks a thousand times better than it did once they took those center pieces out and the way that they did the uh, that, the fuel center looks fantastic. We're glad to have that there. Uh, this project is not going to do anything to the front of, you know, the front of the facade of the building. It's going to make it uh, you know, be that inside space be usable. Um, like Like you said, they haven't been able to, um, to lease any of this stuff out, so I'm all for it. Let's, um, let's get them some revenue going through there.
I would agree too. The whole building looks a lot better since the remodel. I go by that, that area quite often. I do, um, for the applicant, I do have, I mean, two questions related to what Mr. Andrews asked. So is there going to be an office in that storage area?
Um, we're determining whether it's going to go in the storage or in the old sub-shop over by Advance America. And we're going to potentially make that a leasing slash, you know, office for our staff over there, because that's vacant. We have had interest, and maybe this overanswers the question. We've had quite a few groups interested, four restaurants and a large supply company that does pet supplies, along with hairstylist group. But all of those have fallen through because of COVID. And so, the, the idea is we put this, get this approval and we start the plan. But if any of those come back because of vaccinations, anything like that, then we would put those people in that space. But right now, we're, we're getting drilled with costs from the remodel and no income. And so, we needed a solution. And so, that's why we came up with this idea, knowing that there is a need. We did some research. There is a need for climate-controlled storage that's indoor in Salina. And so, we thought that would be a great fit. One of our partners in the deal, without disclosing names, has experience in this and also had some information and helped us connect, you know, the dots and put this together. And one of the other questions Mr. Andrew asked was if we're going to be the owners. Right now, the plan is for a Salina Sunset, or we're going to do like a, an LLC, but we'll have our, we'll sign a lease with ourselves to, to make sure we meet all investor requirements. So that, that's sort of the structure of that as well. So the office could either be in there or across the way in the old sub-shop, that's been vacant for, before we owned it, so at least four or five years.
What about the entrance? Would that be on that north side?
Correct. The entrance is on the north side. There is an area behind the movie theater, if you look on the south side, that you sort of see how it juts out. It's on the top of the picture, but it's on the south side of the property, that we could back a truck in if there's somebody that needed to unload items. There will be a scanner, yeah, exactly, right where you can see the brick there. There are two doors. One is hard to see, but, because it's painted the same color. But there would be a door there that is accessible. The way it's going to be set up, and this is all still being worked on, is that you'll have a QR code through your phone. So when you rent a unit, you'll use your phone to open the door. And that will be a code access, and it'll have an alarm that has to shut, so it can't be propped open. So that will be also not only in the front, but in the rear as well, on that south side, for anyone that needs to unload. There, because of fire exits, et cetera, those doors have to be clear anyway. So that's what we've been thinking. I mean, obviously, open to your input, but that's how, if we, like a big truck had to come in and drop something off, that way it doesn't block everything and there's space for it.
But the day-to-day customer would be parking in front and entering from the front?
That's correct. That's correct. And there's parking spots there. As we put in the new parking lot, we added spaces actually, even with the fuel center, because we took out the medians. That created so much havoc for people. So we, when we took those out, we were actually able to add spots. So we're relining the lot. Actually, it might have just been completed, depending on weather. So the 10 spots, or nine or 10 spots recommended, right across the, the drive aisle have been added in between McDonald's and the north side of the north entrance there. So that, we should be able to meet that requirement as well. And it's, and yeah, it's, yeah, you can see them there, yep, with the new lights.
And I apologize for calling it unattractive. I didn't realize that it was remodeled.
It was, when we bought it, it was ugly. It was, it was really falling apart, which I don't know if we should disclose all of this, but when we did our demo, one of the forklifts bumped a piece of it and it fell over, but with maybe just a little knock. So that's, that's how precarious it was. So, Mr. Baffa, I agree with you. It was, it was pretty ugly. So we had to do something. So thank, thanks for acknowledging it, though. And everyone else's compliments are much appreciated. We've, we've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this one. We're ready to get it leased and put some permanent financing and get some cash flow. Our investors definitely are as well, so.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just on a closing note, I'd point out that there was a lot of cooperation and good work that was done between the owners, city staff, and Dillon's to make that fuel center a reality. And that was a real plus for Dillon's. It's a real plus for the center. It's a real plus for the neighborhoods.
Very nice. Do we have any members of the public present that need to comment on this?
I currently don't see any, but we'll, we'll give it a moment or so to, to see if there's anybody that, that logs in real quick.
I move we approve?
I'll second it.
All right. It's been motioned and seconded?
Okay. Commissioner Waters?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Linkowitz?
Aye.
I got everybody, didn't I?
You didn't call my name.
Oh, Commissioner Baffa? Your last, made the motion. So that motion passes unanimously for Mr. Crane's benefit on a conditional use permit. The planning commission application is final unless neighboring property owners should submit a protest petition. And based on the lack of response that we've gotten for this meeting or for the notices that we sent out, we don't anticipate that happening. So we would anticipate this action being final, and we will communicate that to you in writing.
Thank you very much. Everyone, thank you. The kind words are appreciated, especially, yeah, after all we've been working on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck.
So we have no legislative matters, administrative items, or preliminary discussion items. We are, for at least the foreseeable future, in the first half of the year, we are probably going to maintain the once-a-month meeting schedule, with the exception being January, because we need to pull together for you and your review, an annual report of your 2020 activities to go on to the city commission. And so, we will probably have a Zoom meeting that we'll call on the 19th, two weeks from today, so that you can review and comment and ask questions about the annual report, because we owe you a summary of everything that you did in the strange year of 2020 with all of our mixed meeting formats. If there was a meeting format, we probably had one in 2020. So we'll, we'll give you a summary of, of that and the cases that were heard. And then, we'll have a meeting first, first Tuesday of February, March, April. And so, we'll, we'll continue with just the one meeting a month for the foreseeable future. And I would imagine that they'll continue to be held by Zoom until there's some dramatic change. But city, city staff, if that's any indication, we, we still have a number of employees out with COVID or with contract, contract chasing or things related to that. And so, it's, it's, we're, I think we're going to be operating at this model for the foreseeable future.
If I could suggest that, uh, from now on, if we're going to have Zoom meetings, that we should mail out the agenda in minutes. It'd be, it'd be nice to have it right in front of you. And then, also, I've participated in other Zoom meetings, probably maybe a couple dozen. And I've never heard it cut out like it has been today. And I've even seen the screen freeze up for a second or two. I don't know if it's a bandwidth problem or what it is, but it was a little choppy. Unless it was just on my end.
I, I only had one time. I mean, we're, we're doing a shared screen approach, and we're trying to show graphics, so there, there's going to be things that go in and out. But from my end, I only had one point where Mr. Olson had made a comment, and the very first part of it was cut out. But I, I can't speak for the rest of you, but from, on my end, I didn't have any issues with hearing or being able to see who was speaking.
Okay. Well, maybe it's on my end. I occasionally got a message that my internet connection was unstable, which I've never gotten before, though, either.
Dustin, as meeting moderator, did you have any technical issues that you observed from your end?
No, I, I didn't experience anything. The only one that I saw was the, the moment when, when Mr. Olson was asking a question and we missed the front end of it. But that was the only one that I, I had where I couldn't hear something. I will say that sometimes there is a little bit of a delay between what I'm trying to show on the screen and what actually gets shared and shown on your guys' end. And it's, it's usually a second or, or two or three. Usually, it's not too terribly bad. But it's not to the point where you can't hear. It, it doesn't seem to affect sound. It seems to just be that there's a little bit of a delay on, on what I'm sharing and what you're seeing. But that's, I think that's normal along all Zoom meeting platforms, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah. And in terms of our members of the public or public input, I would say, and I know Mr. Olson was at that meeting as Board, as your planning commission representative on Board of Zoning Appeals, but we had a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting in December, and I, I think we had 17 or 18 people in on that meeting. And it, it worked really well in terms of, I think that everyone that was a member of the public, whether they were an applicant or an interested neighbor or whatever, that except for one technical problem we had with one speaker, we were able to accommodate a whole bunch of people in that meeting, and it worked pretty well.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it worked really well. We had just the one person that, when they first started talking, we could hear them, and then it went dead and couldn't hear them afterwards. But otherwise, it worked out well. To get the public in, have them make their comments, and then be able to continue with the meeting.
Well, in, in fact, right now, it, it seems to be a lot better. I'll bet it's my internet connection.
But I, yeah, I just at least wanted to share with commissioners that it's, I don't think, it was demonstrated at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting that, that interested members of the public that want to join in and participate and get their comments in. That was a very widely-attended Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, and we got lots of public input, and everybody got to participate. So I think it's, it's just a matter of, in the case of Mr. Hall, South Ohio land, either them or Stan Biquist owns almost all the land in the, in the vicinity of that. So there, there weren't a lot of outside parties. And in the case of Sunset Plaza, we just, we just, we sent out our notices, but we just didn't get any feedback either way. But I, I think the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting demonstrated that interested members of the public are able to fully participate. We just haven't had a lot of public input on planning commission our last couple of meetings. Dustin, do we have anybody there for a public forum?
I'm not seeing anybody that is expressing any interest to speak on something other than what we've already discussed with our items, our agenda items.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay. We've got a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. Those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, I'll do the roll call.
We'll do the roll call for adjournment, too, just to be consistent. So Commissioner Baffa?
Aye.
Commissioner Waters?
Aye.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Linkowitz?
Aye.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn that's been unanimously approved. And what we will attempt to do then, Mr. Baffa, is that we will send out by mail the annual report and attachments when we, when we do the packet. And that way, you won't have to worry about printing stuff out, and you can have something in front of you when you, if you have questions for us. But we, we will meet again on the 19th, so you can review that report.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thanks for everybody's.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.